All right, good evening. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight for the public hearing. I am Tab Bickel, and I am the Executive Deputy Secretary for Institutional Operations for the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections. I'm here tonight to have another public hearing regarding the potential closure of SCI Retreat consistent with Act 133. Please know that all information presented during the October 17th hearing is being analyzed and will be included in the written report. As such, all the information presented tonight will also be included in the written report. The potential closure is not a decision that any of us take lightly. With me tonight, to my far left, is Executive Deputy Secretary for Community Corrections and Reentry George Little, and to my immediate left is Deputy Secretary for Administration Chris Ottman. We're here because we want to hear your voices and your concerns. If you want to comment to us, please step up to the microphone and state your name. The hearing tonight is being video recorded and transcribed by a stenographer. With that, I will turn it over to Deputy Secretary Ottman.
Good evening. I would like to present an update to our current financial status, plans of action, and address a few statements from our last hearing that I feel require clarification. Our estimated budget shows that the department with $140 million projected deficit. This deficit is the current forecast with a combination of prior year expenses as well as current budget shortfall. Our deficit from last fiscal year is comprised of several factors. We had an unanticipated issue with an increase in illicit drugs within our institutions. The secretary ordered a statewide lockdown and several measures in order to address staff and inmates' safety. The department opened SCI Phoenix and closed SCI Greaterford. This was an enormous task which required additional security and maintenance personnel to ensure public safety with the transfer of inmates as well as to ensure proper operations of the physical plant. We also did not receive funding for wage increases for the bargaining units from the last year. That totaled over $30 million. Our current financials as of the end of this September show a deficit of $137 million. Our request at the time of appropriations included an increase of $126 million and a $50 million supplemental to catch the past but deficit. This would have addressed our operational needs. Our original budget request did not include a prison closure. The department has implemented several initiatives in an attempt to operate within the allocation provided. We had made a 10% reduction in positions at central office. We have closed the Sharon Community Correction Center and outside housing units at Huntington and Phoenix. We have eliminated referrals to county jails for parole violators and have consolidated them at Progress Community Correction Center. We have closed mental health units into one unit now at SCI Waymart. We have closed housing units at Camp Hill and are considering closing others. We have also proposed the closing of a prison as our population continues to decline. The cost to operate a correctional institution is approximately $50 to $100 million for an entire fiscal year. SCI Retreat is estimated to cost $56 million this fiscal year. We have also conducted a facility analysis of all of our institutions. This analysis is done on an annual basis in the event of a possible prison closure is considered. This information includes the following: total cost of the facility, personnel costs, operating costs, cost per inmate, capital upgrades, long-term contract requirements, total personnel, facilities within 65 miles, specialized programs in housing units, medical programs in infirmaries, facility condition, and challenges as well as the natural disaster mitigation procedures. The decision to propose a prison closure is not based on this alone. The administration does not take this lightly. We know that this proposal could impact our staff, who have done an excellent job of maintaining safety and security. That is why we have instituted a hiring freeze to ensure that our current staff will be able to make selections on where they would like to go and work in the future. Our HR office has provided information on how this process would occur. This could cause a strain at the surrounding institutions with their vacancies, but it is the right thing to do for our staff. We know that this proposal could have an effect on the local economy, and we are sensitive to that. Because many of our facilities are located in rural areas with limited options for employment, we recognize that recommending closure in any one of those facilities will result in similar negative effects. We are still looking for ways to operate within our appropriation regardless of whether or not this proposal is approved, but we will make the safety of our staff, inmates, and general public our number-one priority. We are looking at all potential impacts a closure would have. We are working with other state agencies to review all the consequences, but more importantly, we are listening to you. We understand the greatest impact will be on our employees, their families, and their communities, and we thank you for your input.
Thank you, Dick. Deputy Secretary Ottman. I'll be moderating this evening's hearing. We have five presenters that will go first, and then we'll open up for public comment. So with that, I'd like to invite Larry Blackwell to the microphone for his comments. And if you would, introduce yourself.
Am I on? Here we go.
You're on.
My name is Larry Blackwell, and I'm the President of the Pennsylvania State Corrections Officers Association, and I come for, second time, to express the concerns that we have with closing SCI Retreat, the safety of all the employees, not just at Retreat, but every employee in the state of Pennsylvania and every citizen in Pennsylvania. We've all heard the economic reasons on why Retreat shouldn't close. I'll be talking about the safety of the employees and the citizens of Pennsylvania. The parole review disclosed that 102 parolees will or have or will commit murder in 2019, and they will be responsible for thousands of other violent acts. And the way we are doing the parole process right now, I believe it needs an independent review, and whenever that happens, we're waiting to see what the outcome of that's going to be. So that could possibly have more prisoners back in these SCIs. The other thing is the 1,700 absconders. As of October, we had 1,700 absconders, and the department said we put together a task force to go get these absconders. Where are we going to put them if we catch them? If we have a task force to go get them, we have 1,700 out there, and closing SCI Retreat, it already put 1,100 inmates back into the population. And the population is already at 96.9% currently. We have 11 facilities that are over 100% capacity. So saying that we're losing inmates and we're good with that, we can't be good with it when they don't fit in the institutions that we have. So, you know, it's going to have a dramatic effect on the safety. And as you said, you know, in the spring budget time, there was no projected closings. And in fact, the secretary said that we needed stability. You know, we lost a sergeant a year and a half ago, and we need stability in the Department of Corrections. These facilities are becoming very violent, and, you know, there's not a whole lot of accountability for the inmates' actions. And we're going to close a facility and have 1,100 inmates go into these already overcrowded facilities that are already very violent. You know, we talk about the cost savings. SCI Pittsburgh was closed in 2017, $81 million it was projected to save. Where's that savings at? Also, you know, we were promised that, you know, the property's going to be repurposed. The property never got repurposed. It still sits empty, and here we are today, talking about another closing. So closing Retreat puts the inmates into a system that's already, like I said, at 96.9% capacity now. We have to stop closing prisons and jamming inmates to already dangerous facilities that don't have the room to lock up the most violent inmates. So in the restricted housing units, you know, we're going to see the effect of closing a prison like we did SCI Pittsburgh, and we have to try to decide what bad inmates we're going to let out to let the other bad inmates in. And whenever we do that, it makes all the staff unsafe because these units that... We've repeatedly told the secretary on three different occasions that we would entertain giving cost suggestions, cost savings ideas. I think there's a lot of ways that we can save money in the Department of Corrections without putting people's safety in jeopardy. And, you know, some of the things that we could do, one example is the hospitals, and, you know, every time an inmate gets a bellyache, he has to be transported out to an outside hospital. You know, we need to get better at doing that or make them pay something whenever they go out and they're not admitted like the rest of the world does. If we, you know, say we have an ache or pain, and we go to the emergency room, if we're not admitted, we get charged $200. Well, if these guys just want to go for a joyride, charge them some money. You know, make it real for them. So in closing, I hope this process is really legit. I do. I think it's very important, you know, taking the information that you got the last time, taking the information you got this time, but keeping in mind that, again, our prisons are violent, they're not getting any better. We have parolees that are committing crimes that, you know, we got to have room for them. And, you know, I just asked, and we all asked, that maybe we go back to the appropriations and say, "Look, there's got to be some money somewhere. This is what we're dealing with." It's going to make these facilities unsafe. And I think, you know, I just, I can't drive that home enough that it's bigger than the economic impact it has on the community. If, you know, we were down that many inmates and we could close a prison and we weren't going to be at these capacities, you know, maybe a different story, but we really are talking about safety, and we need to keep that in mind whenever we're vetting out this process. And, you know, again, take this process seriously. These men and women that work inside this dangerous facility, they deserve that. Their families, their children, they deserve that, and the community and all of Pennsylvania. You know, they deserve our best, and they deserve for us to make Pennsylvania as safe as we can. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite Carrie Gallagher to the microphone.
My name is Carrie Gallagher, and I am from the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, District Council 87, which represents 5,000 employees in northeastern Pennsylvania, dozens of which that work at the State Correctional Institute at Retreat. And I am here to voice afsmi's strong opposition to the closing of SCI Retreat. It'll cause extreme upheaval for the nearly 400 dedicated employees at the facility and adversely affect the local economy. The Department of Corrections' proposal to transfer employees to other facilities within a 65-mile radius is easy to put on paper, but it's widely unreasonable to ask of the employees. Many of the corrections officers and employees live in the local area, and to force them to drive an hour or more to get to work and from work is just wrong. The idea to close SCI Retreat came on the heels of the announcement of plans to close the Whitehaven Center in Luzerne County. Now Luzerne County is seeing the loss of even more good union jobs that help sustain families in this area and stimulate the local economy. How much more can we take? Of utmost importance is the safety of the employees, and to overcrowd other facilities with the inmates housed at SCI Retreat is just not safe. Overcrowding is known to lead to violence, the spread of disease, and an increase in individual mental health issues, all of which can adversely affect the staff and lead to stress. So I ask you to please reconsider and take everything that everyone has been putting forth seriously and to keep Retreat open. Thank you.
Next, Leo Kaskel.
My name is Leo Kaskel. I'm an elected Assistant Shop steward for the service employees in the National Union Local 668. I represent a lot of the counselors, the psychs, the treatment specialists that work in the institution. I'm here to speak about why closing one more prison, another prison, is just a Band-Aid solution and a long-term problem. Closing other previous prisons have not solved our budget problems in the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections. We still continue to have budget problems. We're going to continue to have budget problems. At what point is closing prisons not the answer? Fewer SCIs will have a big impact on our community. We cannot have treatment without security, and we can't have security without treatment. Everybody, almost everybody who comes to one of our institutions is going to go back out on the street, even the most violent criminals. Yes, some people deserve to be in prison for life, and yes, they deserve to be there and not be in our communities. But even the most violent criminals, most of them have an end date, and they're going to end up being our neighbors, our family members' neighbors. We work in these prisons to make sure these citizens become better. We work in there for babies like that. So when we deal with the rapist who comes back out, they will maybe not reoffend. No, not everybody will always not reoffend. Yes, seven out of 10 people come back. But it's our SCIs that provide the proper environment where we can help them and make our communities safer. It's in our mission statement to make our communities safer. By closing another prison, we are going against our mission statement. The citizens who need our help are in our prisons. They are our brothers, they are our children, they are our parents, they are our neighbors. They need help to put them back on the street. They walk out of the doors of the facilities. They don't take their medication. They don't see their therapist. Who pays the price? And the DOC, we don't kick the can down the road. We answer. We are the solution. There's a reason we're no longer called the Department of Justice. We are the Department of Corrections. We're not the courts. We don't punish. We help correct. Closing another prison is just shortening the availability for people to get better. The conveyor belt system that we see of people going in and out is not working. The conveyor belt is creating more and more problems in our communities. We have to own this. I looked at the statistics right in that chair. October, 10 of our SCIs are over 100%. Now, you could easily say, "Oh, okay, well, we're not at 100% across statewide." If it was that easy to manage a population, why, when we're going to be going to prisons in a 65-mile radius, why are almost all of them over 100%? Coal Township is at 101 right now. Frackville's at 104. Monroy at 102. Waymart at 101. And right down at Dallas, it's at 108. So when you see somebody working at SCI Dallas, say, "Hey, you got it hard." And us closing down, how's that helping them? It goes against our mission statement. I looked at my phone just now. The gentleman who first spoke was spot on. On the PA website, there's 1,696 absconders. People who are not following the rules. People who should be involved, but they're not accounted for, so we take them off the That's us kicking down the can down the road. If you look at the statistics on the DOC website, we're great at transparency. Right now, all the CCCs and the CCFs are at 100%. So when parole has to put somebody back in prison, it's the last resort, which is a good thing. We want to keep people in the community. But what happens if we don't have room in the prisons? That's a logistical nightmare. Imagine living on your neighborhood block, and you know that guy's on parole, and he's hot, you know, he's getting hot urine, and he's supposed to go to treatment, but he doesn't go to treatment. Sorry, no room. That goes against our mission statement. This safety issue of closing another prison just doesn't affect us as workers. It affects the community, and it affects the inmates. This is not a logistical challenge. The people in prison are in there because they have needs. They need to be treated. The treatment needs to be done in a secure environment. You want to kick the can down the road and say, "Let's have Department of Human Services pick that up. Now, let's have the local agencies pick that up. Let's have the local nonprofits pick that up." We all know people who walk out of treatment. We, the DOC, should own it, and to get rid of another building, another SCI, is something we should stand and fight against. In the opening statement, we talked about unanticipated issues, such as the drugs and the closures of different prisons. There's going to be more. There's going to be more anticipated issues. If we keep thinking that just shaving it down is going to work, we have to understand that things might change. We have to have a backup plan to the backup plan to keep our community safe. Yes, our inmate population is going down, and that's a great thing. That's a great thing because our legislators are doing great work. People in our community are doing great work. But the cost of an inmate is going up. So we're living in a cartoon world where we think, in the cartoon world, "Well, we have less inmates, so our budget should go down." That's not reality. The cost of an inmate is going up because treatment is needed, because we are there to help our communities. Yes, we are doing great work, and there has been a decline in the population, and there will be a continued decline in the population, especially with the moving forward of new implementations that are going to reduce our population when we go from the JRI to But why get rid of another facility that could help everyone? With the Lehigh Project that was recently done, it saved $3 million, and it was a simple algorithm. With the Drug and Alcohol Treatment Program with the assessments, we saved over $7 million by retooling that. We didn't have to get rid of any brick and mortar. That was $10 million saved. We talk about the formulation of the steering committee and how quick it came up. We talked about that last time. Within 24 hours, everything was already done, put in place. It just doesn't make sense. We talk about our statistics and how they're malleable and that we're manipulated, and we could paint an easy picture of why we could close a prison. But is it the right thing to do? We can talk about our triumphs of the population going down, but we need to help those in need, and putting them out on the street before they are ready is a mistake, and our neighbors and our families pay. I don't have time to point out all the discrepancies I want to tonight because everybody's allowed to voice their opinion. But in 2018 and 19, overtime was expected to be around $108 million. That is a burden that this community should not have to pay for. Another point of concern is the parole violators. We've been talking about this at length tonight. If we constantly don't have a place to put them, we will make decisions, and the courts will make decisions, when sentencing people, that will affect our communities. There's no declining in the parole violators. There's no trend there. And when it comes to violence in prisons in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, compared to the previous year in 2008, 2009, 2012, 2014, and 2015, assaults have gone up. Now, it's one thing to get offered, as an employee, a stab-resistant vest, but what is a better offer is not getting sent to a prison that's over already 100% population. Overall, 33% of our population are being treated for mentally ill. 18 are diagnosed with severe mental illness. We offer programs at SCI Treat for the severely mentally ill, guilted by mental insanity. We offer programs for people who are severely mentally ill and have drug and alcohol addiction We need more facilities with more programs so these people, our family members, our citizens, could get the help they need. All the way up, even SCI Laurel Highlands, they have four therapeutic communities already going, and there is still a waiting list. Why are we closing another prison and taking away more programming? I don't have a simple answer to the budget solution, but everybody in this room knows that when we close the doors to our prisons, it speaks volumes of our society. it speaks volumes of our society. Now, if the prison was to close, I'm not worried about the COs. I want to thank the COs. I want to thank every CO who I've ever worked with and will work with. I have worked in the communities. I've worked in the worst neighborhoods in Hazelton and South Wicksboro. And I have been safer providing my counseling or any of the other services I provide when I cross that bridge and when I'm in that fence. And to say that we got to close another facility, to say we got to close another facility to save money is a disservice not only to everybody who works in the prison, but it's a disservice to the communities and it's a disservice to the Commonwealth. I am worried when we are closing another prison, what we are saying for a temporary budget problem, that will be resolved. We at the PLDC are the best in the nation. I just came back from a training and it was affirmed. We had one of the best and brightest in the nation. And he talked about other states and he's like, Pennsylvania is where it's at. That they're doing groundbreaking stuff. They're doing great things. Why are we taking a step backwards? Yes, money, we all understand it. But we owe something more ethical. If we listen to our mission statement, we are violating our mission statement. Make no mistake, when you close this prison, the citizens are getting an education from the DOC. The communities are getting an education from the DOC. The criminals are getting an education from the DOC. Be mindful of that lesson when you close the doors to another facility to save money. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to invite Keith Crawford to come to the microphone.
Distinguished members of the panel, state and county representatives, community officials, and my fellow family members of Retreat. I want to thank you for attending and allowing me this opportunity to speak on behalf of Civia and the teaching staff at SCI Retreat. My name is Keith Crawford and I'm the only vocational teacher that we currently have at SCI Retreat. I started working at Retreat in March of 2014 as an automotive technology teacher. I served 17 years in the military as a mechanic, both in the Marine Corps and the National Guard, with one tour to Iraq. I hold an associate's degree in diesel technology from Rosedale Technical College and currently have my VOC 1 teaching certificate in the field of automotive technology. I'm originally from a small town in western PA. Maybe you've heard of it, Punxsutawney. Home of the world famous and most ridiculous groundhog, Punxsutawney Phil. Please note that I do not take any responsibility for any of Phil's predictions. Punxsutawney is exactly a three-hour drive from Retreat. And at the time that I was offered the position, we were living and paying rent for a rundown, two-bedroom, single-wide trailer with a toddler and a newborn because at the time, it was all that we could afford. It was a no-brainer that the opportunity for us and the future of our children was well worth the financial risk it would be to move so far away. And let me tell you, it was an extreme financial risk. I spent the first couple of months living out of the cheapest and raddest motel room that I could find away from my family. I would spend my evenings driving around and looking for the most affordable and comfortable place for my family to live. I would drive home Friday nights to spend time with my family and then get up extra early on Monday mornings to make the trip back to Retreat. This went on until finally I found a place and spent even more money and a lot more traveling until we finally moved everything. For the first couple of years, we were financially strapped. I'd even sold my wedding ring to have a little extra cash or gas for groceries. Eventually, things became better and we just recently purchased our first home. In fact, the day that they asked us to assemble into the gym to inform us that we were proposed to close again, was the day before I was scheduled to close on my house. Therefore, you can only imagine what level my anxiety has been for the past two and a half months. During my tenure here with my Retreat family, I've been cross-trained and asked to teach lessons outside of my field. Not only do I teach the automotive program, I also teach the National Center of Construction Education and Research's core curriculum, most commonly known as the NCCER Core. A baseline construction course that covers things such as employability skills, communication skills, basic math, and et cetera. Everything that our students should learn prior to entering any workforce. In addition, I teach PennDOT's Flagler Safety Training and most recently, the OSHA 30 Safety Training. Obviously, in the past five-plus years, I have been extremely busy and have trained a lot of students. However, my fellow ABE, special ed, and business teachers, not to mention our barber instructor, have been just as busy, if not more. Just to give you an idea of the amount of time, effort, and attention that all of us provide to our students, I will give you the number of students that we recognized just recently at our graduation this past October. 19 students received their Commonwealth Secondary Diplomas, which is a program that allows them to earn credits towards their high school diploma. 13 students earned their GEDs. Four students earned a Business Entrepreneurship Certificate. Six students earned their barber licenses, which I might add is a very difficult exam to pass. 45 students earned their NCCER certification. Six students have successfully completed a required 800 hours in the automotive program. And 220 students received PennDOT Flagler Safety Certification Cards. These numbers were just from this past year alone and that is not including the 38 students that I just recently registered for OSHA 30 cards. Every graduation that we have had since my time here has typically recognized the same amount of students for their accomplishments. None of this could be possible without the hard work that our school counselor and principal do to keep the wheels turning in our department. This proves that the education staff at Retreat not only works well together, but also has a system, a system that is not only productive, but also effective. I would be a fool if I didn't mention our amazing activity staff, also members of our Civia family. These gentlemen offer and oversee a multitude of programs and activities that not only promotes growth, responsibility, and overall physical wellness, they give back to the community. The Activities Department manages an inmate organization called the Community Development Organization, or CDO for short. This organization, whose members are primarily inmates, has just celebrated their 30th anniversary. During those 30 years, the CDO has raised and donated over $300,000 to various charities, both locally and around the country. The money that they raise comes from various sales that they offer to Retreat's population. These sales not only improve the overall morale and security of the institution, but they also allow the opportunity for the population to give back to the community. On average, the CDO spends roughly $75,000 a year to local vendors in order for this to happen. None of this would be possible without that staff. Lastly, I cannot forget about our library staff. Although they are not part of Civia, they are part of our education family. Those two gentlemen do an amazing job of keeping the library functional and available for use to all the population. In the past month alone, our library has seen around 1,400 inmate visits. Our library is key to improving the education of our students by offering the references needed for the student to actually conduct research and learn to educate themselves. A perfectly running engine, whether it be diesel or gas, can only operate if it's in time. The computer must collect data to know where the position of the pistons are, when it should inject the fuel or ignite that spark. If anything causes a disruption in that timing, the engine will run poorly or even not at all. It is my job as a mechanic to diagnose and troubleshoot. And based on what I see at SCI Retreat's Education Department, the Activities Department, in fact, the institution as a whole, is a perfectly running engine. And yet somehow the state wants to come in and pull wires and move parts around in hopes of saving money. I teach my students how to use critical thinking in order to solve a problem. Well, the first step to solving a problem is to define the problem. And here's the example that I use. If you install an aftermarket stereo in your car and after about five minutes the fuse blows, then the easy fix would be to replace the fuse. So you do and it blows again. Now you replace it with a bigger fuse. That seems to work, but after 10 minutes, your car fills up with smoke and you possibly catches fire. You obviously did not define the problem. It is what's causing the fuse to blow that's the problem, not the fuse. For years, they have been just pulling fuses in hopes of fixing the problem. They also thought it would help to replace those fuses with a bigger one. Well, do not be surprised that someday you start to see a lot more problems. In conclusion, I would never forgive myself if I did not use this time to publicly thank all the COs and security staff of Retreat. Never has there been a moment in my five-plus years of working in a classroom alone with 12 to 15 inmates, literally surrounded by tools and virtually anything that could be used as a weapon, have I felt worried or fearful of my life. I go into work every day knowing that if, God forbid, anything terrible were to happen, each and every one of you would be there as quickly as possible. And for that, I thank you. I have a saying, those who listen do, those that hear don't. In other words, I hope that you are actually listening to all of us this evening and do what is right as opposed to just hearing us with the intent of doing nothing. On behalf of Civia, my family, and the Education Department, and the entire Retreat family, I again thank you for your time and may God bless each and every one of you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Dave Pidry, the Luzerne County manager.
Gentlemen, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm honored to be standing here before you to join the county's voice with our brothers and sisters here from Luzerne County in asking that SCI Retreat remain open. Truth. We are here tonight because of that word, truth. And I believe Mr. Bickel when he says, "We haven't made a decision yet. We're open for suggestions." And I believe that Mr. Bickel is telling the truth. So let's look at what we're really talking about here at SCI Retreat. Now, we have gone over the financials ad nauseam, over and over again, about what that means to close SCI Retreat. Over 400 jobs leaving Luzerne County. And what that means for the mom-and-pop stores. What that means for our Little Leagues. What that means for our Girl Scout troops. What's that means for our schools. Because ladies and gentlemen, this room is not filled with just corrections officers and people who work there. They're filled with community members. This room is filled with people who care about Luzerne County. This is people who care about our community. And it's time for us to stand with them. So let's talk about that truth and why we are really looking to close SCI Retreat. Now, I understand that there should be a, you're saying, no one's going to lose a job. We're going to move people 65 miles away. And that's great. I'm happy to hear that no one's going to lose a job. But is the question really that you will not have to incur those costs for that staff? What's the real truth? And you're going to be saying, well, there's going to be a hiring freeze and that's how we're going to save money. But Mr. Ottman just said, "We are a $150 million deficit." There's going to be a hiring freeze anyway. So what's the real truth and why we're moving this process forward? I don't believe it's because of the staff costs. I think that SCI Retreat is on the chopping block at this point because of the capital cost, which is the one-time cost that we have to put in the money into this facility in order to make it a viable facility and make it grow and alive again. And that's a one-time cost. And I'm sure the Department of Corrections will point to the bridge. And they're going to say, "That's going to need $2 million worth of work." And I understand that. And $2 million is a lot of money. But I just read a couple of months ago that Governor Wolf put $317 million in a rainy day fund. So I ask you, if losing 400 jobs in Luzerne County is not a rainy day, what is? And can we use that money? Can we use that money to make this place viable again? Now is our chance to do this together. Luzerne County is standing here, ready to partner with you. Prior to this call being going out, we did not receive one phone call saying, "We can do these things together." But I am here offering that to you. We can do these things together. I understand the Department of Corrections, you're going to say, "Listen, Dave, we're in a crisis." Good news, I'm the manager of Luzerne County. We live in crisis! And here's the thing, gentlemen, not only do we live in crisis, we thrive in crisis. We grow in crisis. We're Luzerne County, we step up. When 2011 floods happened, we built it back up and we're better than ever. Why take 400 jobs out of here? We're growing. With the inclusion of our new distribution plans that we've just put over in Hannover, we have over 3,000 jobs coming to Luzerne County. We finally got our financial house in order. Why take these jobs away from us at this point when we are growing? Now is the time to find the truth. Because I think we can do these things together. And we are really here because one man, this is the second hearing. You only had to have one. But we are here because one man told the truth. And that's Department of Corrections Secretary, Mr. Wessel. And in a moment, in a hot mic moment when nobody was listening, he had a moment of candor where he told the truth. And he said, I'm going to say in the PG version. The man said, "I do not want to shut this place down." The Department of Corrections Secretary said that. When he thought no one else was listening and he spoke the truth. And I applaud him for that. Isn't it refreshing to have a public official tell the truth? And that's a wonderful thing. So it comes down to this. What can we do together? What is the truth? The truth is, do not close this place down. The truth is, we can do these things. If we work together, we can get there. And ladies and gentlemen, that's the truth.
Thank you. We are now moving into the public comment phase of this evening's hearing. I would invite anyone who wishes to speak to come forward to the microphone. We have someone in the back with a clipboard just so we can record your name and that will become a part of our permanent record. So Amy Schrankis in the back with the clipboard. Please see her, sign up and we'll take you in the order at which you come forward. If you would, when you come forward, please give us your name and then you may go with your comments. Sir? Are you, do you wish to speak? Okay, we'll give just a minute for everybody to make their way to the back to sign up and then we'll go forward. Okay, we'll go ahead and go with our first speaker. You can still continue to sign up back in the back. The gentleman who stepped up first, if you would, please give us your name, and then you can go forward with your remarks. Actually, halfway down on the microphone stand, there's a little knob you can use to raise and lower the height. Very good. And your name, sir?
I am Officer Kellum.
Okay, Officer Kellum.
Good morning, good afternoon, and good evening. The Commonwealth of PA turns a black eye when dividing families. As we all know, the people here who are not in corrections may not understand, we are not just a job, but a family who relies on each other, day in and day out, emotionally, physically, and financially. Uprooting one officer from one institution to another seems very basic. However, one officer being uprooted is not only that. One officer's family, but all the people that rely on that officer, which can be 10, 20 people, and one local family being uprooted. Taking from the community for economical growth, taxpayers, and law-abiding citizens who make our community safe by not only to show a presence in uniform while on watch, but also while home or in the community with the trainings and experience we are awarded every year. We are more observant and proactive in our communities. So as you put numbers on the crime rate going down, have you ever thought of us officers living in these local neighborhoods or towns as the reason why crime rates are actually going down? Well, we are, along with other law enforcement officers living in those areas in which they work. Promotional and lateral transfers are different than being forced to uproot through the dollars and cents, when our lives, families, and growth is here, right in these little towns people in big cities have never even heard of. You know, it's a small town to you, but to these men and women surrounding me, it's a home. So as you make your decision, remember, you're not just transitioning officers for economic gain, but you're breaking up families of corrections and in turn will make our crime rate go back up in our areas once again unsafe. These officers are coaches, foster parents, godparents, youth advisors, grandparents, business owners, farmers, hunters, and keep positive individuals in their respective areas of living. So collectively, we are more than just officers. Sorry. We are more than just officers who correct an institution. Oh, Jesus Christ, I missed my part. Sorry about that. Excuse, I apologize. Something just happened. All right. They're godparents, youth advisors, grandparents, business owners, farmers, hunters, and keep positive individuals in their respective areas of living, which, of living. So collectively, we are more than just officers who correct an institution. The Commonwealth turns a black eye on breaking up families. So with all due respect, so should you. We are a family of one and a consistence of different cultures together who make, not only is the institution run, but we keep it running with normal operations. So you, Mr. Bickel, you, Mr. Little, the awesome Winera Woods over there, don't have issues typically day in and day out. Crawford said something about the vocational education, it's great, you know, the activities, but bigger than all that, we have not only limited the interactions of inmates, not only wanting to come back to jail or prison and correction institutions, but they get a good environment in which we teach them correctly to not want to come back and hopefully go out and be law-abiding citizens, and not only change what the narrative, but make a new one. That's our job as corrective officers, and that's what we're here to do. And SEI Retreat changed me, so it can do it for anybody.
Thank you. Our next speaker, and if you, again, if you would, just say your name and...
My name is Joseph McTake, and several things kind of bother me on the closing of Retreat. As I understand it, a budget was signed by Governor Wolf, which would have included the Retreat and the Whitehaven deal. Two days, two weeks later, he signed the executive order stating that he was closing Retreat. Shortly thereafter, he gave his staff a $10,000 to $26,000 raise a year. I'd love to have a raise like that myself. That was in the paper and on the news. And then he announced that he wants to do this super state police headquarters, he wants to build that and millions of dollars, but he hasn't got money to keep Retreat and the Whitehaven Center open. Can someone please explain that to me?
Thank you, sir, ma'am, please.
Okay, well, I guess I don't fit in. My name's Weaver Cooper, and I'm not anybody. I'm not a corrections officer. I've never worked in any prison. I've never served in law enforcement or in a military. I don't have a cheerful yellow shirt. But I can tell you that I live here, and I count on these people in these yellow shirts to keep me and my family safe by helping to rehabilitate people who are gonna come back home to this community after they've made mistakes. And what I do, since I'm not a corrections officer, is I teach computers and math, and I work with some immigrants, too. And so I want to limit what I would say to talk about what I do know, which is math. And there's been a lot of numbers tossed around out here. One of the things I've heard is that there's space in these prisons to move these prisoners because some of them are only 98% full or 97% full. Well, I don't know a lot about prisons, but I know that that means that if you've got 100 beds, there's somebody already in 97 or 98 of them. And I'm guessing that, well, if the toilet's broken in one, you can't put somebody in that room. And I'm guessing that if you have somebody who can't stay in a room with somebody else, maybe because they'll get beat up or because they'd beat somebody else up, then maybe you can't use that other bed. Now, I've never worked with prisoners, so I can't tell you for sure if out of 100 prisoners, two or three of them might be the kind of guy who can't share a bedroom with somebody if it's a little tiny bedroom. But I've raised kids! So now I'm thinking about that because I've raised kids. And I've seen my kids make mistakes. They've never gone to jail, I'm really glad for that. They're actually pretty good kids. They're taxpayers like I am. But if one of my kids had gone to jail, and maybe for the kind of thing that made other prisoners not like him, and maybe he got beat up or stabbed or hurt because he got shoved into a cell with somebody because you were only 98% full and that bed was available, then I can tell you I'm suing the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So somebody a few minutes ago said that it was $2 million for a bridge? I'm getting way more than that out of you if you take my child. Now, that's just one bit of math. So let me go, I'll introduce a little bit of harder math, okay? I'll teach you all the way up to calculus, but I promise not tonight. There's two kinds of numbers in math. There's real numbers and imaginary numbers. Real numbers are the ones we use to count things. Imaginary numbers are called that because they make equations work, but they're not really things you can point to or count. It's a square root of negative one, we won't do that, I promise. But they're imaginary because we stick them in to make an equation work, to make it balance out. Now, when I've heard some of these numbers and I've looked at it, why? Because I'm a taxpayer. And I look at those numbers, I see real numbers, like how many people work here and how much it cost back in the day when they used to ship people to West Virginia to find beds for them. And I see imaginary numbers, like how much the Commonwealth is saying they're gonna invest in education, maybe, but not in writing, not a real promise, but they're gonna invest, they're gonna do some nice things for Luzerne County to make it up to me and my kids and my grandkids. Those are imaginary numbers. You made those numbers up and dropped them into your equation because it made them balance. And I'm really proud of you for the math. I'll give you a big A+ on your sixth grade math test for getting those imaginary numbers right and making your equation work. But my taxpaying self, no. You're getting an F. You're getting an F because you didn't get the main point of this lesson, that we count things in real numbers. Now, my scenario with my kid maybe being in jail, that's an imaginary number, too, because my kids aren't in jail. They never have been, Lord willing, they won't be. So let me go back to a real number, which is if you squeeze these prisoners out of jail, because that's what you have to do if you close prisons that are already 98% full, and I'm sure there's some organization somewhere that tells you, "You're not gonna put a sex offender in with some gang guy who's gonna beat him up to 10," I don't know, or some "this, blood, that, that I don't even know a lot about." I told you, I'm a math teacher, I don't even carry a gun. I live here, I go hiking, that's about it. Okay? But if you squeeze those people out, and they get out of jail, and they hurt me, they hurt my child, my real child, not my imaginary one, they hurt my grandchild, you know what? I can afford a better lawyer than the family of those inmates probably can. In fact, I already know some. And if you think I'm not gonna make national headlines coming after the Commonwealth because you resulted in hurting my family, you have misunderstood the families of Luzerne County. I'll let somebody else... I have a yellow shirt!
Thank you, please, and if you would, introduce yourself for everybody here.
Well, gentlemen, I know that we don't talk much, but I'm Felicia Rocco. I'm a counselor slash CEO at SEI Retreat. I promise this is probably the last time you're gonna hear from me today. I'm not going to get personal like I did the last time. You three were there. You heard my story, you know my background, you know where I came from, and you know what's gonna happen to me and my family if you close down Retreat. But I do want to throw a couple facts at you. Christopher Miele, number JF63, no, 3634, theft of movable property. He did a couple years at SEI, got let go, violated parole, violated parole again, absconded, came back, re-paroled, got out, eventually maxed out. Christopher Miele, same guy, name sound familiar? NH5805, strangulation, two and a half to 10 years. But hey, let's put him in boot camp. He was paroled on 2/20/2019. Now, DOC policy, I know that policy's bend, but according to DOC policy, you need a minimum of two years and a maximum of five in order to qualify for boot camp. Not 10, five, gentlemen. Also, you cannot have an escape within the last five years. He had an escape two years ago, 17. He was on special probation for escape. They picked him up in Georgia. Christopher Miele, strangled, once again, strangled, what he did in jail, what he was paroled for, for eight months, after eight months, strangled a 16-month-old baby. 16-month-old baby strangled. Folks, his minimum isn't until 2020. 2020. Why is this dude on the street? He didn't qualify for boot camp, and he didn't deserve to be paroled in eight months. And I understand you need a judge to say, "Sure, let's give it a try." But that judge is one person, we are a whole department. We had a say in that. Let's also go with Tavon Thomas, Freddie Perez. They shot into a house with an AK-47, they murdered two-year-old Nicolette Rivera and injured several more. Thomas was an SEI parolee. He paroled on his minimum date, his minimum date. He was seen in parole, got approved for parole, and walked out of the institution on the date of his minimum. Guess what, folks? They killed this two-year-old little girl. And his max date is in three of 2020, March. Here's two gentlemen that went out there and killed two kids that should still be within our SEIs, that have proven themselves to be violent, that you allowed to be put on our streets, and the one, Chase Bonberger, remember that name, that 16-month-old boy that was killed because you guys set this guy free for strangulation when he strangled this baby? You guys set him free, and you guys killed that kid. So guess what, folks? One death that we could have prevented is one death too many. Now, let's talk about the parolees that reoffend and abscond. We have been talking about them all night. We have not talked about another number that has not came up once in this whole process that I want to bring up to you guys, because I would actually love an answer on this. How many parolees leave our institutions, they go out and they overdose and die? How many of them go out and they go back to their gangs and they get shot and killed or something happens to them, or they wind up on the street and they don't survive? I want to know how many parolees that don't come back to jail but don't survive to the end of their sentence because they went back to the same behavior that got them there? Because guess what, folks? Those are our neighbors, those are our family, our friends. These are people that we were responsible for, that we put back on the street that did not survive. And I could tell you the names of several that did not survive their parole sentence. Once again, overcrowding. If you have a smaller staff-to- inmate ratio, you're going to have big problems. If you have an incident like we had at Manoy last week, and you have more inmates in a small space, how are we supposed to get to that place when there's more obstacles in the way? We're not American Ninja Warriors. It's gonna take us some time to get there with more obstacles. And when we do get there, let's say this guy's getting beat up, but this guy has a homie, so we're gonna get shanked or stabbed on our way there, we're gonna put ourselves in danger because there's more people and their friends that are surrounding us while we're trying to save somebody. You got, this is the reality of it. And, Manoy, we now have 13 staff members suspended under investigation. What is that doing to our employees? Right now, you have to fill those 13 spots within the institution, plus we're on a hiring freeze, so you're already downstaffed. So what are you gonna do? You're gonna mandate other staff to fill their shifts because you won't allow them to come to work. So all these people that are getting mandated, they're exhausted. I've done double shifts, I've done a lot of them, and it's exhausting. And when you're exhausted physically, mentally, emotionally, you're not aware of what's going on around you 100%. Your self-awareness goes down, your safety goes down, and the safeties of those around you. So not only can you not protect yourself as effectively because you're being mandated, you can't protect those that you are here to protect and serve. Let's go to tax money that was put into Retreat that would be a terrible waste if the institution closed. We already put money into Retreat, right? So what's gonna happen? Are we just gonna throw that money that we already spent in the garbage and say, "Ah, maybe we don't care about that?" Because I know we just painted every single door and every single railing and every single steps and every single building. I know that we did some bridge repair and we have to do more, I understand that, but we already put money into it, why not just finish the job and get it done right? Bravo Block, Charlie Block, and the garage, they all just had brand-new roofs put on. Are we just gonna throw away that money, too? The back road behind the institution, it was flooding, we just rebuilt it and put new pipelines back there. We just put in a new steam gas line. Lots of millions of dollars there. Can't just throw it away, folks. That's our money, that's a taxpayer's money that went and put this stuff in this institution. What about the compound areas that we've done so much work, random stuff here and there just throughout the compound? The Building 5 floor, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Building 5, the old clothing exchange, but the floor was caving... quality exchange, but the floor was caving in, we had to bring in outside contractors to redo that floor. That's a lot of money. And we just completely redid our lobby, repainted it, redid the floors, built a whole new desk, put a $5,000 granite countertop on the lobby desk. Are we just gonna throw that money away? That's taxpayer money, you can't throw it away. All right, let's talk about Little Scandinavia, it's a very catchy name, I'll give you guys that. 64 single-celled inmates, Little Scandinavia will hold, it's down at Chester, it's called a hybrid unit. I want to know why, here, we have pictures on the website of 64 cells with TVs already mounted on the wall when they're not even open yet. Why are we giving these inmates free TVs? Nobody ever gave me a free TV. Who's gonna pay for the cable of these free TVs? Let's see, the taxpayers bought new kitchen appliances, several of them, brand-new washers and dryers, and I'm telling you, they have nicer furniture than I'll ever have in my house in Little Scandinavia. And I'm on, I understand, all right, we need to teach them things. Why can't we recycle things and bring in recycled stuff or refurbished stuff? If my cell phone's broken and I send it back to AT&amp;T, they're sending me a refurbished phone. So if that stuff is good enough for me, why isn't it good enough for inmates? Why do they need brand-new furniture that's nicer than any furniture we all have in our house, I can almost guarantee it? And Little Scandinavia, you went, somebody obviously had to go there and study their prison system to know that it works. If we don't have the budget to take care of the inmates and the people and the staff we have now, where did the budget get the money to send people to Scandinavia and to study their prison system? Let's focus on ours before we go to another country. Once again, let's go back to the beds. What our teacher was talking about, I'll help her out. Z codes are the inmates that can't live with anybody else, they may have murdered a cellie in the past, or beat them up, or hurt somebody. What about the inoperable cells where the doors don't close, or the toilets don't work, or the sink don't drain? There's a lot of cells that aren't operable, there's a lot of beds that cannot be used but are in the complement. I think we need to make that a real number and then represent that to the people here. Why are parolees given so many chances? I see parolees that give four or five dirty urins, who can't abscond, come back to jail and say, well, let's see if six months from now you might learn to stay where you belong. It's not happening, folks, they go out and they abscond again and then they come back. We can't keep doing this, we can't keep these people on the street, they're showing us they can't. They're practically begging us to bring them back and teach them the right way to live, but we are not even helping them. Now, as of October, population reports, we do have 11 SEIs that are over 100% complement, but does everyone here know that when Retreat was chosen at the end of August to be shut down, we were at 100.3%? So why would you choose a prison that is over 100% complimented to shut it down and shove those inmates elsewhere? Yes, right now, we're at 97 because you stopped our population from coming in, but when you chose us, we were over-complimented. Let's talk about some of the good things happening at Retreat. They have a dog program run by the SPCA and the inmates, the inmate handlers coming in, they train these dogs. I adopted two of these dogs myself, Max and Riley, I love them. They brought a lot of joy, they brought a lot of chaos to my life, and some days I want to kill them, but they're amazing. I would not have these lovely animals if I didn't have Retreat. And I spoke about my nephew who has emotional disturbance and a lot of issues of his own. These dogs have done wonders for this kid. They have helped him amazingly, it's great therapy for him to have them around. I am very thankful for that program. We have all these educational programs. We have a laundry that not only services SCI Retreat, but it services all the state hospitals around this area, other state institutions, other prisons, that they bring their laundry in, and we clean, our inmates clean it, they work, and they get stuff done for others in the community around us. We are a disability institution, you have trained every single one of us to deal with disability inmates. Why scatter us throughout the state and not keep us with the inmates that you trained us to deal with? And I'm not sure if you guys are aware, but you guys have multiple, multiple people like myself that have come from state hospitals and other mental institutions that already know how to deal with them. Why scatter us when we're working well together where we're at? And we have a family-like atmosphere here at SCI Retreat that I know if anything happened to me, they would have my back. In fact, I was the victim of an assault at SCI Retreat, where an inmate did try and grab my arm and did try and pull me into a cell. Lucky for him, I'm as big as a man, I could fight like a man, he didn't get very far. They now call me Spicy Two-Piece, you can probably figure out why. But, once that inmate was contained, guess what? Every single person in that institution had my back, from the superintendent on down. I was not alone in that fight, and never will be, with my SCI family. And I like to talk about our leaders, because we have amazing leaders, amazing staff. I can approach any one of them, from the superintendent on down, with any problem I have. In fact, I've been so stressed out over SCI Retreat closing, I have sat there and I have cried with the deputy, because I'm that stressed out. But they helped me through this. They are amazing people, and I thank you for your leadership, and I thank you for what you do for us. Also, let's consider a buyout, folks, I know it was briefly discussed at Retreat today, but think about the money you can save with a buyout. Right now, we have high mandates because we're not hiring, we're understaffed, and on a double time day, there are staff at SCI Retreat making $70 an hour because they're forced to be there. If you gave a buyout to some of these guys who have 20, 25 years in and they're ready to leave and they're tired, their body, their mind, they're exhausted from these mandates, they're willing to go. Bring in a bunch of fresh COs, a fresh start, new awareness, fresh eyes, and pay them the starting rate, and bring all of our institutions up to complement, you will be saving a hell of a lot of money. I don't know the numbers, but I guarantee you, if you plug them in somewhere, they will work. Let's get rid of the old who want to leave. I'm not pushing anybody out, I love you old folks, you taught me a lot. But bring in the new, bring in the fresh eyes, lower the pay, lower what we're paying out, lower the mandates, lower the overtime, and keep ourselves and our inmates safe. Earlier today, you guys spoke about next year, you will need a supplement income in order to pay for the DOC budget. Our fiscal year starts in July. Now, here we are, it's almost December. We'll be lucky, maybe we'll have an answer by New Year's. You cannot close the institution for at least four months, that takes us to the end of April. You have May, June, and July. You have to move all these inmates, you have to move the staff, you have to do your, would I forget what he called it before, the repairs and stuff, to revitalize the buildings and everything, to reuse the property, all that money. In fact, it makes no sense to close SCI Retreat right now because you will save no money this year at all. The fiscal year will be over just about by the time you close this institution, and when it comes to next year, you already said you're going to need more money. We didn't sell, we're not solving any problems by taking this institution away. And lastly, I am aware that taxpayers' money and how we spend the money is a big responsibility, that we are civil servants, we have a duty to keep our community safe, and we have a duty to these civilians who we serve every single day. But I also want you to keep in mind that every single person in this room, staff included, we are taxpayers. We have to live in these communities. So please, stop releasing inmates that are not ready to leave, stop overcrowding the prisons, and keep our staff and our community safe.
Thank you. If you would, please introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Jennifer, and I'm a nurse. So I honestly couldn't tell you the day-to-day operations of a prison, I'm not even gonna pretend to, but at the end of the day, it doesn't matter how it's run, it matters how much you spend, how much you save. So as a nurse, if you come to me and you have a paper cut, I'm gonna give you a Band-Aid and tell you to keep it moving. If you come to me because you lost your right leg and you now are an amputee, I can't tell you to keep it moving, I need interventions, I need a doctor, I need a surgeon, I need more things than just myself. Closing SCI Retreat is an amputation, an amputation for the family, an amputation for the staff, the prisoners, the community, the taxpayers, and you guys are trying to put a Band-Aid on that. Well, I'm gonna send you guys to other prisons. That's great, it's an inconvenience to the family, but so what? Who cares about the inconvenience of the family? Let's talk about the fact, the six prisons that are within 65 miles, the only prison that could accept any more prisoners without being overcrowded is Muncy, they can only take 84. All the other ones are already overcrowded, where are you gonna put them? So you're gonna send all these workers to prisons who are already over capacity? And then you still have another 923 prisoners from Retreat, where are you putting them? Because you have another six that are already overstaffed too, that's including your bootcamp. So you have four that technically have a lot of beds. Camp Hill has 652 beds, so let's sit 652 there, Phoenix has 467. So you take all them, you fill them up, you're gonna need more staff, so how are you having a hiring freeze across? Who's gonna take care of all these extra prisoners you're taking over there? Because none of these people are going, they're all within their 65 miles. So where are all these prisoners going and who's gonna take care of them? Can the prisons accommodate them? She just said you have cells you can't use. We all know prisoners are in there for a reason, it's not because they were pillar, you know, statuses of the community, they're there because they don't know how to act. So you're gonna put people that don't know how to act in an even crowder space, so you're gonna, you said yourself, you had unexpected stuff, violence, the drugs, do you think that's gonna lessen if you put more in one place? It's actually gonna be even worse, so you're gonna have even more unexpected stuff. But none of these guys are gonna be there to help because they're all within the 65-mile So the overpopulation, you, the more prisoners, the more staff you're gonna need, which increases the amount of spend on employees. And as Leo told you, the cost is going up, it's not going down for them. And you said yourself, the cost per person, the med program, the med facilities needed, the infirmaries, the total personnel, the staff, the overloading, you said all that costs were unexpected. How do you not expect your costs to go up if you're adding all of these prisoners somewhere? Obviously, you're gonna have to pay for them. So you know, that goes back to just unexpected, no, it's going to be expected, and you can't put a freeze on them. Overcrowding is a consequence of criminal justice policy, not anything you did or anything I did. So undermining the ability of the prison system to meet basic human needs such as healthcare, food, and accommodation, it also compromises the provision and effectiveness of rehabilitation programs, educational vocational training, and recreational activities. Overcrowding as well as related problems such as lack of privacy can cause or exacerbate mental health problems, that's a given. I know half the time, I don't like the people I have to be around every day, but I, I can't beat them or I'll go to prison. They're already in prison, what do they have to do? I'm gonna punch you, I'm gonna shank you, and then I'm gonna go after the guard. You're not solving anything, you're actually making more problems for yourself. So this little Band-Aid that you're putting on this amputation is actually gonna fail because you're gonna have more problems down the line. And then, you know, if you take the abscums from your list that I printed today off your website with all your numbers, you technically have 1,007 on SCI, 84 can go to Muncy, you're still gonna have 923, you're already over-capacitated, 661 already.
They can't go to Muncy.
Oh, see? I didn't even know that, I told you, but you can't even send them there, so you can get rid of that 84. That puts you at, well, it puts you at 3,364, but add the 84 back on there, and technically, you guys can only accommodate 2,107. So that's gonna leave you at 1257 plus 84, so you're over at 1,300. 1,300, you have nowhere to put them. I'm not taking them home, they're not going to my house. I mean, I'm having Thanksgiving dinner, but I promise you, you can come, but you're not bringing all the convicts. So where are, I guess at the end of the day, I want to know how you thinking, and I know you're not surgeons or doctors or nurses, you don't work in the metal field, but how putting a Band-Aid on a hemorrhage is going to help in the long run? How you're not opening yourself up to more? That young lady up there said she's gonna sue ya. I would go to court with her and be like, hurrah, because you guys are setting yourself up for failure, that's all you're doing. And I guess I would just love to read all of your responses on this when we get it. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. If you would, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Dave McQuay, I'm a retired captain from the Department of Corrections, last serving at SCI Retreat. Money, 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 that's all we hear that the problem is. Not that Retreat hasn't met its standards, 100% for ACA standards. Closing Retreat has a personal thing for me, because in 1980, Retreat State Hospital closed, and a certain employee there, nurse supervisor, had to transfer to Clark Suma State Hospital to finish her career. It was the hardest three and a half years of her life, and that was my mother, Joan McQuay RN. All right, so I know this thing about relocating to an institution within 65 miles is not the panacea that you talk about. We talk about money, money, money. We had unexpected expenses this year, or you talk about the expenses in the budget. The closing are greater for than the opening up SCI Phoenix. According to DGS, there are no new prisons scheduled for next year, no construction, no plans. So that expenditure is out the window. The drug interdiction program, we've got that under control supposedly because we've seen a downturn in the drug cases, so much so that we canceled the contract, when I say we, sorry, I'm not employed by the department anymore, but the mailroom contract with the Florida firm has been canceled, all right, partially because of litigation and everything, but it's back to the mailroom. So there still are drugs coming into institutions, but not at the rate that it was, so those costs are down. SCI Retreat, you said their budget was about 50 million, I think it's closer to 40 million when I was told about it and researched it, but for the sake, we'll say 45 million. How does $45 million of savings come to 138 million? Last meeting, there were members of the governor's staff here from the administration talking out how they were gonna take 138 million dollars of that savings and put it in this project and that project. I see they're not here tonight because they learned their lesson not to come to the public forums and say how they're gonna spend money that they took from corrections. The legislatures are here that control the purse strings. It's up to them to allocate the money and for you people to request it. Now, Luzerne County manager said the governor put 317 million into the slush fund. That brought the total slush fund up to $350 million this year. $350 million that's just sitting in a bank, and we won't name any bank names where it could be, but that could be used for a lot of allocations, for programs, for corrections, and for other things, property tax relief and beyond. Why are we saving money? Not paying our credit card bills, basically, to put money in the bank and being charged higher interest, because that's what we're basically doing. By closing a prison, we're charging the Commonwealth higher interest on the staff, on the pressure on the community where these inmates might have to go, on the roads and bridges where the staff have to transfer, the toil they have to do. All right? Retreat has always been a stellar facility since it opened, all right? It's always passed its ACA standards, as I said earlier. The bridge is overbuilt. Everybody brings up the bridge. That bridge could take a nuclear blast short of being knocked down, all right? The pillars were overbuilt by the WPA years ago. All the structural engineers who were there talked about it, said this bridge will never fall down, all right? Now all of a sudden, it's a major topic of concern. It might need a coat or paint or two, which they did some years back, but that's it. The pillars are strong, just like the community and the staff here are strong. You know, Retreat's a good facility, it's a great facility. It provides a living environment for the inmates, all right? Our budget covers not only security, but it covers the education that we're hurt for, it covers the medical needs of the inmates, all right? It covers the vocational training, all right? It covers the maintenance, the budget, of the facility, and the training. It's a good-run facility. It's one of the most efficiently heated facilities in the Commonwealth right now because it's heated, transferred over to natural gas. Natural gas from the Marcell Shale, a Pennsylvania product heating a Pennsylvania facility. Now, there may, there's some talk that, you know, there could be some disingenuous talk about gas from the Marcell Shale and everything else, but it's one of the least expensive heating facilities. The facility used to rely on 25,000 gallons of heating oil a week in the cold weather. Now luckily, we haven't had that, but the gas is piped directly in from the plants. It's efficient, it doesn't need to be worked on, it's already been taken care of, all right? The buildings have been refurbished as they talked about. The cost per inmate and the cost per staff is down, all right? All right, so you have some staff working overtime, but part of that is because of the manpower survey, down almost 10% on the staffing for SCI Retreat since 2017 manpower survey. Well, you created that whole scenario by not hiring the staff, all right? And people call off sick, they have FMLA, they have vacations, I mean, everybody gets three, four, or five weeks now, depending on that. You're gonna have needs for staff. But if you, the Commonwealth, Department of Corrections, haven't hired the staff to come up to your own manpower survey standards, how do you expect to, for costs to go down? It's on the Department of Corrections. Like I said, it's all about the money. Retreat is a fine facility, it operates very well. It's an integral part of the safety and security of Luzerne County and the Commonwealth, and I urge you to keep it open, because there are other choices. When you talk, look at the savings that you talk for not having a new institution opening, having a contract- having a contract for the Florida mailroom firm, you gotta look at those savings. And the legislature should, the senators, they're the ones that allocate the money. Just ask them for the money. Ask them for the forty more million dollars for corrections. And I'll bet you they give it to you because it's sitting in the rainy day fund. It's the taxpayers, the taxpayers, the people in this room. We pay for that. We don't get our money from anybody else from New Jersey or New York. Sure, we get some federal funding for different projects, alright? And they talked about the Scandinavian model. Why did you take sixty double-bed cells and turn them into single cells and buy fourteen-hundred dollars worth of fourteen-hundred-dollar uh stoves? And I forget how much the cost was for the washer and dryers for, for a project, for a panacea? These people are in prison. Chester ran pretty well before this came into, before the Scandinavian project was there. We're not gonna do it for other jails. It's not feasible, alright? And last but not least, our illustrious governor just said death row inmates are gonna have day room. Unshackled privileges. We are looking at a disaster coming when a hundred-and-sixty-eight or a hundred-and-fifty-eight death row inmates who are committed extremely heinous crimes are allowed to walk around unrestricted. And you're gonna see a result from that, and that's a totally another thing from Retreat. But you've got, guys gotta think with common sense. We've gotta do what's right for the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and its citizens. Thank you, and I urge you to keep Retreat open.
Thank you. Sir, if you would, introduce yourself, please.
Yes, good evening. Uh, good evening, gentlemen. Uh, we've met before. My name is Attorney Sean Loggson. I represent the uh, the Sanitary Sewer Authority for the Borough of Shikshini. Uh, members of our Board of Directors are here in support as well, as well as our Executive Secretary. Again, gentlemen, uh, I feel strange, after all the impassioned speeches tonight, standing here, and I'm gonna talk to you about sewage. Uh, jobs are on the line. We have inmate and correction officer safety being considered. But this is the ripple effect that Senator Baker touched on last time when we had our first hearing. The ripple effect is going to be, is gonna be seen very far and wide. Uh, currently, as I stated at our last hearing, and again, I'll be brief. I know you've heard me speak before, and I don't want to repeat myself. Uh, the currently, the authority accepts waste from the Borough of Shikshini, Cunningham Township, a portion of Salem Township in Columbia County, and of course SCI Retreat, which is basically a small town. Unfortunately, our currently, our current delinquency rate, uh, at sixty dollars a quarter, which is what we charge, is thirty percent delinquency. Of course, the greatest impact that closing is gonna have on the financial security of the authority is that. Uh, our two, our two thousand-and-twenty budget projected is fifty-three percent of our operating revenues will come from SCI Retreat. All that's gonna be gone. Um, obviously, with that gone, we're expecting our delinquency rates to go up. And again, these are matters that we can provide financial information to DCED and to your office to consider. Um, the authority not only treats hundreds of thousands of gallons of wastewater a day, it also inspects and maintains the main sewer lines, including repairing any sewer line breaks. We maintain the meters, pumps, make repairs as needed. SCI Retreat reimburses Shikshini Sewer Authority for any repairs and upgrades to the system. Again, that goes as well. Uh, many of the operational costs, as I said at the last hearing, at the wastewater plant, they're fixed, and they're gonna remain present and consistent even if SCI Retreat closes its doors. Now, these costs, of course, get passed on to the residents of Shikshini Borough and our contributing townships. Uh, gentlemen, what I wanted to point out too, uh, just in addition, additional information for you to consider tonight. This plant was upgraded in two thousand-and-fifteen, two thousand-and-sixteen. It's basically a brand-new facility. Um, we have capital costs that are related to upgrade the plant, and I know your office has been provided with a lot of this information. Uh, it looks like Retreat has payments that are due, that are due this year and next year under our agreement. Uh, Shikshini owes approximately four-hundred-thousand dollars uh on two, on January first of two thousand-and-twenty-one. We have payments of thirty-five-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty dollars each year for the next fifteen years. Now, uh, as I stated at our last hearing, I'm currently working with our authority engineers on a report that we can present to the Department of Corrections and of course, our state senators because the system we have is designed for a certain amount of inflow per day, and of course, that inflow depends on SCI Retreat. If Retreat closes its doors and we take that flow away, our engineers are anticipating that the plant can't even operate at the low flows that we're just gonna have from the contributory townships. And of course, another issue that surrounds, that I briefly touched on at the last hearing, that surrounds this is the environmental impact that this might have. Again, you're talking about sewage. You're not thinking about what a sewage plant actually does. And one of the things that this plant was designed to do was to reduce the nitrogen and phosphorus levels that will eventually wind up in a river and then wind up in the Chesapeake Bay. Now, I believe that this warrants, and I believe there, there is consideration being made from DEP regarding this issue, and I'm assuming they'll give a report to the DOC as well. Um, so environmentally, closing of this plant, closing of SCI, well, closing of SCI Retreat will, could lead to the closing of this plant, and God only knows what it could do environmentally. Um, but again, this is the ripple effect that was talked about at our first hearing, and I really, I urge you gentlemen to consider the ripple effect. It's not just buying coffees on the way to work. It's not just, you know, this, things like that that are very important, but the major ripple effect, like what's gonna happen to the Shikshini Sewer Authority and the people that it serves. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, if you would, introduce yourself, please.
Uh, John Soloski. Uh, I just think that it's odd that you guys have chosen to close the SCI Retreat. If you wanna Google labor surplus areas in Pennsylvania, uh Luzerne County is, there, there's ten cities that are labor surplus cities in the state of Pennsylvania. Luzerne County has two of those cities in them, Wilkes-Barre and Hazelton. So I think that it's, it's, it's an odd choice for you guys to pick this, this uh facility to close when there are two cities in this county that are, you know, that you could see that are labor, you know, there's a labor surplus. So I, I just urge you guys to look, I don't know if it's the Department of Economic Community, Economic Development, or go to some, you know, just double-check with a financial, you know, one of your financial groups because, you know, there's two cities here that are, you know, there's labor surpluses. And I don't think we wanna be one of the, that, one, uh, area where we have two cities that turns into the whole county becomes a labor surplus county, because there's two counties out in western Pennsylvania that are like that. And I think that losing these jobs, nobody's gonna be able to bring any jobs that pay this kind of money and replace them. So I think that you maybe wanna look to maybe try to take, you know, close another facility down because there's a lot of hardship and with jobs here in Luzerne County. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, in your name, please.
Yeah, hi, gentlemen. Welcome back to Nanticoke. My name is Harry Haas. I'm a member of the Luzerne County Council. I'm here to support what Manager Pedry just spoke about just a little bit ago. We passed a resolution on November eighteenth unanimously, mind you. I'm gonna read it for you if you'll indulge me. That whereas Governor Thomas Wolfe and the Pennsylvania Department of Corrections postponed the closure of the State Correctional Institute Retreat in late August of 2019, and whereas State Senators Lisa Baker, John Gordner, and Johnny DeChick indicated they would voice their opposition to the closure of Retreat and would fight to keep Retreat open, and whereas SCI Retreat currently houses approximately a thousand-and-fifty-seven inmates and employs approximately three-hundred-and-eighty-four full-time employees, and whereas the closure of Retreat would have a devastating economic impact on Luzerne County and the families of the individuals employed at Retreat. Now therefore, be it resolved, Luzerne County Council does hereby oppose the closure of SCI Retreat and voices its strong support of our state senators and Johnny DeChick, Lisa Baker, John Gordner, in utilizing all options available to them to oppose and fight for the closure of Retreat, and that was effective immediately. And again, I, I come as a member of eleven across Luzerne County. And we all know that, that faith in government really seems like it's an all-time low. And you can see here in the room, there's a lot of anxiety. People are rightly upset about the process. And um, I, I just hats off to Manager Pedry. I mean, he laid out a great case, and David, every time you speak, like, it makes me so proud that I vote for you. I, I can't say that all the time because we do disagree, but tonight is one of those nights, Dave. Well done. I, I know you will. I know. But um, nonetheless, in, in all seriousness, uh, when we came a few weeks ago here and heard our senators speak, I was so proud of them as well. They were extremely researched. They were extremely direct, and they, they know what they're talking about. And when we look at the closure of SCI Retreat, the potential closure, we're looking at, at four-hundred folks nearly that are employed there, and I'm just envisioning they all, most of them have spouses, maybe one or two kids at home. You're talking probably like fifteen-hundred people that are directly affected by this. I, I really want you to let that sink in, please, that, that Luzerne County, we're about three-hundred-thousand and some people here. It's about one, half of one percent of our entire county that is affected directly by this closure, if that's what the board considers doing. I, please, I, I would like, if you could, to have all the, all the anger that is, again, rightly coming at you tonight, and the body heat too. It's getting hot in here. But the, to, to, to have that melt away, and if you could just hear what I'm saying, that there are many ways to make cuts to a budget. I know I've been in front of, of people in angry rooms before. I know it's not an easy, I envy your task. But when I look at, at this potential closure, this is a one-time, very short-term fix. If we look at all the other ancillary costs, it's gonna cost our area. A gentleman from the Sewer Authority just came here. We look at the human costs. We have a lot of, of residents here. Their family members are housed in SCI Retreat. To close this facility means going a, a lot farther away, to help bring them back into society like the one gentleman talked about. It's the Corrections Department. We're trying to help our society. This will have a devastating economic impact, but it's gonna impact in a lot of ways that maybe we're not thinking about right now. And I want you to please take this back to your board and consider that. I also think, it seems like to me that the, the issues on this budget are more systemic. I don't think this closure is really gonna, uh, really offset that cost for the long term. And when you look at, at a building, I, I don't think there's a lot of buyers in line to buy a closed Retreat. And we know what happens when the public school systems close their schools. They sit idle, and they get boarded up, and they get raised. And it's a blight to the community, and it's, it's, it's a sore spot because our pride goes away a little bit more. So please, this is extremely unpopular. I hope you, you can, you understand. I hope the, the voices of the folks here are resonating with you tonight. Please, we beg you, all eleven members of council, our state senate contingent, our representative contingent, our manager, the local offices here. This is not popular with anybody here. Please take this back. Find a way. There are many ways to balance a budget. There are many ways to make it work. We've done it here in our crisis times in Luzerne County, like Manager Pedry said, and it can be done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hi, my name's Mark Truskowski, and I have the opportunity to represent the H1 Bargain Unit at SCI Retreat. I'm the Eastern Region Vice President for PSCOA. Um, I had the opportunity in two thousand-and-fourteen also to stand here amongst the men and women that are here today and fight this off once before, okay? Um, it's the same thing that we heard in fourteen, okay? The people's voices that you hear today, it's the same outcry that we had before. I'm gonna be short and sweet because there's a lot of people behind me, but I have a petition with five-thousand names that I wanna submit to you for consideration in keeping SCI Retreat open. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening, and thank you for coming here and giving us the opportunity to speak to you about the closing of SCI Retreat.
Would you?
My name is Debbie Amoraski. I work at SCI Retreat. I'm the inmate employment coordinator there. My responsibility at SCI Retreat is to make sure that I assign all my inmates jobs. Why do I assign them jobs? Because it is a way that we prepare them to be reentrance into the world. It is to help teach them the soft skills and the hard skills that they need for when they go out into that world to be viable reentrance, to be able to do something, to be something when they get out there, um, after leaving the SCI that they're, that they're leaving from. Secretary Wetzel's fiscal year 2019-2020 budget testimony documented that prison populations have reduced for five consecutive years. As of December 2018, the DOC population decreased by two-point-two percent, the largest one-year population drop in the department history. It further noted that although the DOC population has declined, the board of parole and probation population steadily increases. That's something we've been repeating and repeating. We're putting more and more of them out on the street. I have to consider that the decline in the DOC population is not because crime has decreased overall. We need only to watch the national media and local news to see what is happening in our towns and cities to recognize this. But in fact, incarcerations have decreased because of changes in our judicial laws governing crimes for incarceration, parole, and early releases. Our philosophy shift was to be of one that goes from simply warehousing inmates to one that focuses on performance outcomes. We need to maintain our facilities and shift gears to promoting educational and vocational programs that create viable reentrance, reducing the recidivism, and naturally creating reductions in prison populations. Closing our facilities and sending inmates out with earlier parole dates is not the answer to keeping our communities safe and answering budgetary issues. I fail to see where the closure of SCI Retreat is the answer to the budgetary issue. According to the 2019-2020 budget testimony, the DOC has evaded a twenty-six-point-eight percent increase in population and the budget became twenty-three-point-three percent lower than it would have been without the Justice Reinvestment Initiative and other internal efficiencies. If we are working more efficiently, why is the budget demands that the need to close another state correctional facility? Why are we closing SCI Retreat? Is the DOC where the state budgetary issues lie? Or are we a political alternative to other unresolved political budgetary issues? Mandatory overtime expenses, which add to budgetary issues, are a direct result of facilities being understaffed. Closing facilities to save money and crowding inmates into other facilities only increases the inmate-to-officer ratio, exposing the officers and staff to potential of more staff assaults. How much have we really learned from the tragic losses of Eric Williams and Sergeant Bazerman? The number-one asset to the DOC are the dedicated professional employees. The administration needs to focus first and foremost on keeping boots on concrete in our facilities at the necessary level and keeping all of our facilities operational. Those who walk PA's toughest beat deserve to know that the administration won't make financial decisions that put their lives in jeopardy as they patrol or protect the lives of the citizens of Pennsylvania. We have good people, brave men and women, who put their lives on the line every day, and they deserve to be recognized. So I ask you, recognize and consider the personal lives of SCI Retreat employees and how the effects this closure will have on them and the communities that they live in. SCI Retreat is a major business organization within this community. It is a major supporter of our local economy, nonprofit organizations, and tax support for local municipalities, property tax, and school systems. The removal of SCI Retreat puts the burden of the economical and tax losses on the citizens of this community. The community already suffers from the burden of higher taxes, implications of increased crime, and the opiate, opiate crisis. And yet, another most recently added tax, the rent tax. This community consists of mainly small businesses that will be left to support this community and the local school districts. They alone cannot support the loss in economic and tax revenue that will be created by the closure of SCI Retreat. Thus, that burden will be sent to the citizens living within the community. According to the U.S. Census, the percentage of seniors living in Luzerne County is nineteen-point-nine and twenty-one percent just for Nanticoke City. Many of these senior taxpayers are living here on fixed incomes. With less money for households to spend, there is less economic activity. Additionally, because of the imposed commutes that SCI Retreat employees will experience, they may have to sell their homes and relocate, adding additional revenue loss and census loss, each which have an impact on this community. With the closure of SCI Retreat, administration is maintaining that employees be offered positions within sixty-five miles of the facility. That distance can create an additional commute burden of an added one to two hours on employees. For those families with children or loved ones needing special care, this puts a tremendous degree of pressure on them. Staff required to work mandates will have even less home time and time to rest before committing their lives back to the DOC shift. For some staff, it will simply mean relocating, leaving behind homes, family, friends, schools, and community support systems, or perhaps even leaving a job of which they regarded as their life career. Let me repeat the words that were used by Secretary Wetzel during his 2015-2016 budget year recommendation, and quote, "Regardless of the size of a correctional system, it's only as strong as the staff members who literally risk their lives entering our facilities. Supporting those staff members on a day-to-day basis is critical," unquote. Do not weaken the system by failing to practice what you preach. Please keep SCI Retreat open and examine the issues and concerns in full perspective and with open minds. Thank you.
Good evening, if you would.
Hi, I'm Alicia Fan. I'm the wife of a corrections officer. Um, I just wanna thank everyone in this room who works at our local prisons. I just want to thank everyone in this room who works at our local prisons. I would never do what you do, I would never want to do what you do, you can't pay me enough to do what you do, and I thank all of you. I thank you guys for being here and listening to us, I hope that you show us the respect that we deserve. I wanted to speak at the last meeting, but as you see, my emotions get the best of me, I'm already like nervous, but then I saw the video of Wetzel, and I was pissed, just like I'm sure everyone else in this room. I was nine months pregnant, four days before I gave birth to my son, sitting at the last meeting on my alma mater auditorium, along with my three-year-old daughter, there listening to everyone give their powerful speeches and pour their hearts out. And to watch that video and see him completely disregard everyone, I, I felt like an idiot. I'm sure everyone felt like idiots, like they were made a joke of, and that's not okay. So, thank you to whoever watched that video and pointed out what he said and posted it all over social media for everyone to see, because without that, we wouldn't be here today. Because as we saw, out of the mouth of Wetzel himself, it looked like the decision was already made, and there was nothing left. So, thank you for the second chance, but now I'm going to read what I wrote down. I don't work at Retreat. I do not work at Retreat, however Retreat is my family. See, I'm sorry, it's my hormones still. I wanted to come up here today and express that not only does the closure affect the employees of the prison, but also their families. Hope that the panel in front of us today is here to listen and respect everyone and take it seriously this time around. I'm the wife of a corrections officer. For the last 14 years, my husband puts on a uniform, walks out the door for work every day. For the last 14 years, I pray to God every day that he comes home safely to me. I tell him every day, be safe, and I love you. Now our three-year-old daughter, who's here today as well, also says daddy be safe, she knows, she asks him what his handcuffs are for, what his handcuff key is for. It's for the bad guys, be safe daddy, come home safe. We now have a one-month-old son who's here with us today, they deserve to have their father come home every day safely to them. Um, sorry. Retreat is almost at max capacity from what I understand, just like all of the other prisons in the area. Moving the inmates and overcrowding other prisons is not the answer, it would only make our loved ones' jobs more dangerous than it already is. My heart breaks for the family of Officer Williams, nobody should ever have to bury their child. I never want to see that happen to anyone ever again. There's people in this room that I consider family, that have been there at our wedding for the birth of our children, birthday parties, every major milestone with us. I love them, they're our family, although not blood. I know they have my husband's back every day, and they want him to come home just as badly as I do. As I know, he has their backs as well, and he loves them as well. I'm here to fight for all of them and speak for all of them today because I know they can't speak for themselves, they can't say what they want to say, I can. So let me know what, what you want me to say, and I'll say it. Stand here today in support of all the men and women that work at SCI Retreat, not just correctional officers, the nurses, the teachers, the administrative team. They all risk their lives every day walking into that building, I will continue to fight with them. I ask why the Department of Corrections seems to be the redheaded stepchild of law enforcement? Why when budget can't be made, is there a new state police facility being built, but prisons are being closed one after another to save money? Governor Wolf wants prison and probation reform, that's all well and good, but there's a reason that inmates are in prison. They don't just knock on some random person's door watching Wheel of Fortune at home and say, hey, I'm going to go lock you up for no reason. Two months, in a two-month period alone, in Pennsylvania, I heard at one of the meetings that I last attended, six people were murdered by people on parole, and two of those people murdered were children. I'm a mother, that pisses me off, that shouldn't happen, that should never happen. I don't know if any of you up there have children, but it should piss you off too. And that alone, right there, we need to tell Governor Wolf this is not okay. They're in jail for a reason. Does he not care? What if that was someone in his family murdered by someone who should have still been in prison? I'm a stay-at-home mom with two kids, the prison closure will affect us, not with just travel alone, but my husband will have to travel farther for his job each day, putting miles on his car and costing more in gas, but more importantly, spending more time away from his family. I'm a stay-at-home mom because it costs $20,000 plus to put two children in daycare just for me to go to work. Maybe Governor Wolf should find a solution for that instead. What isn't being stressed is that although we hear over and over again, each employee is going to be offered a job within 60, 65 miles, it's not from their home, it's from SCI Retreat. So there's people already that might be driving an hour-plus to work every day, that's two hours round trip away from their family, miles on the car, gas, that all comes out of their paycheck. Now they may have to drive an additional 65 miles each way on top of their drive already. Families may have to relocate, spouses find other jobs as well, and children switch school districts, all because Governor Wolf wants to pick a new prison to close each year to save money. We heard it will affect the Sewer Authority and local businesses, it affects their paychecks, it also affects the sewer bills for the community, which will see a drastic increase. When will it end? What prison will be on the chopping block next year? There are other answers and options. Please pass this message along to Governor Wolf. I am asking you to put the safety of the workers of SCI Retreat and the community who would be affected by the release of certain inmates first. Put them first over money and your agenda of closing prisons and your probation reform. Thank you.
Sir.
Good evening, my name is Eric Daniels, I'm a corrections officer for SCI Retreat. I just recently returned to the institution after one year and, and four months of detached duty as a training sergeant at the Training Academy, and I'd just like to say that I never missed an opportunity to tell someone that I'm from SCI Retreat. In fact, I created a few opportunities to tell people I'm from SCI Retreat, I just want to put that out there. I can't help but feel that staff safety is an afterthought, and I don't believe I can be swayed against that. So what I would like to say is that I've had several inmates approach me and candidly tell me that our unique environment provides a way for them to do their time in the way that we would like them to. They've been able to avoid gangs, they've been able to avoid antisocial behavior, things of that nature, because of the way our unique environment operates. And our mission statement says that we're to provide individualized treatment to all these offenders. So, we have a very unique way of doing that, and anyone that knows me knows I'm extremely passionate about training. I feel that any training that you can receive is good, it puts another tool on your correctional tool belt. If you were to close SCI Retreat, you would take a vital tool off the collective correctional tool belt. I strongly hope you'll reconsider. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir, if you would introduce yourself, please.
Good evening, Walter Griffith, I'm a lifelong resident of Loser County, had a business right down the street from here. Most of the folks in this audience are customers of mine, back in the day before I retired just about two years ago. Those folks are the people who keep our community alive, those are the people who pay our bills and help us, help me survive. And it's unfortunate that the, the state feels that the Corrections Department is the place to close and save money. I think that doesn't save money, that costs money. When you close a correctional facility, it costs money. It costs the county money as a newly-elected council member. We just sent in a letter as well from the four members who just recently got elected to the governor, complaining that we don't feel it's prudent for them to close Retreat either. The, the cost to the county is phenomenal, as Mr. Pedri alluded to earlier. We're looking at a 5% tax increase this year, and, you know, if they close Retreat, how much is it going to cost the residents of this county once again? Human services, parole, courts. We just had a lady not too, too long ago, Ethel Price, right down here, not even a block away, that was beaten to death, 97-year-old woman, beaten to death by an inmate who should have been in jail. He shouldn't have been on parole, but he was, and he beat the woman to death. A, a poor woman, 97 years old, never got a chance and, and lived that long, to lose her life to something like that, sad. So, corrections are very, very important. We need to make sure that we keep that alive. I also want to take a moment to just recognize the, the Senator Baker and Senator Udchek, because if they weren't supportive of Act 133, we wouldn't even have the opportunity to speak today. And that's very important, because if it was up to the governor, he'd have closed it, and we would have had no say. So without the legislature passing the Act 133, none of us in this room would even have an opportunity. So I want to thank those two individuals and others in the legislature as well that supported it. Because it's very important that the people have a say in their government, and the people have a say in what's going to affect them directly. And this affects everybody in this community directly, in this county, Newport Township, Nanticoke School District. Everybody's affected by this closure. And I understand budgets are tough, and we got to cut spending, I understand that completely. Everybody has to live within a budget in their household, but there's priorities we have to put in our place. We can't say we're not going to put a roof on the house that's leaking because we want to buy a new car, that doesn't work. We have to put the roof on. This is an, an important decision for the governor to make, important decision for the Department of Corrections to make, the secretary needs to make the right decision, which means he needs to make the decision to keep the corrections departments open and keep these people working for our safety in this community and for the community in, in financial structure. We're going to lose financially, big time, if they close Retreat, big time. To say the least about everybody who's in this room who may have a small business that relies on those people to come and buy their product, eat in their restaurants, buy their coffee, have their vehicle serviced, all of those things are very important to this community. And as Mr. Pedri said, we're working hard to bring the community back, we're getting distribution centers, we're, we're doing the things that we need to do to try and bolster up our economy here, to have something like this come, will devastate Loser County directly, and it certainly will affect everybody in this community. So I implore you to ask, ask the Secretary of the Corrections to not close SCI Retreat, not only not close SCI Retreat, but not close any corrections facility, because we need to have them open. Safety is paramount, and that's what government's supposed to do, keep people safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hello, Your Honor, I'm Jordan Lindbacher, I'm a student at Northwest Area School District. I would just like to say that closing down SCI Retreat would be a big mistake, not only for all these workers, but for the families behind those workers as well. The workers, they put their boots on, their uniform on every day to go and risk their lives to put food on the table, to keep a roof over people, their families' heads, and to close SCI Retreat and to push them away from their families just to go to an even more hostile prison would be a big mistake. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening, my name is Julie Heitzelman, I work up at SCI Dallas, I'm a treatment specialist there, I've been there for about 13 years. I am also the shop steward for SCIU Local 668 employees, and my favorite color happens to be purple. I won't be, you know, speaking very long, but in, in February 1st of 1989, it was my birthday, I was nine years old, and I got a pink radio for my birthday, and I loved the radio because it came with this non-stop cassette, cassette tape of Disney songs, and I used to play it over and over again. And the only thing that would have made that radio even better was if it was purple, because purple's my favorite color. But, let's, let's go to October 25th of 1989, a few months later. Does anybody remember what happened then? I think the people in this room all know what happened on that day, okay? For three days, it took three days to get an entire prison under control. SCI Camp Hill went into a riot. A hundred people's lives and their families' lives were changed forever, never the same. 69 correctional officers were injured, 41 inmates were injured, and these people were never the same. 14 of the buildings at SCI Camp Hill were burned to the ground, okay? I was doing some research, and I, and I came across the statistic that that prison was over 45% above capacity at the time that that happened. Overcrowding prisons and understaffing them is a recipe for disaster. I know that if SCI Retreat closes, the staff, at least I could speak for, you know, SCIU and the staff up at Dallas, the wonderful family that we are, would open, you know, offer open arms for anyone that had the chance to come up to Dallas, but where will they be coming? You heard earlier tonight that SCI Dallas, and of course you know, is almost at 108% capacity, okay? And that overcrowding is, is at a dangerous level. For the risk, and I don't know, I, I don't want to sound, I, I don't want to say anything that, you know, could get me into trouble. I, as a union steward, I go to safety meetings, and recently at our safety meeting, a week ago, I said, you know, we really need to look at how we handle blood and body fluids. In the 13 years that I've been up, up on that hill at Dallas, I have seen more blood and body fluids on that compound than I've ever seen, okay? I said, and, and this wasn't a joke, I was serious, when the blood and body crew comes down to clean up blood after someone gets in a fight or someone gets assaulted, they put these cones up that say wet floor, and they have a crew come and spray it with disinfect and clean it up. I've seen on more than one occasion now, staff, because they're wet floor signs, and they don't say biohazard, walk right through the blood, right? Couple weeks ago, I was in my office, incident on Charlie Block. I, when I left my office for the end of the day, there was a trail of blood from Charlie Block all the way down the compound, through the corridors, into the trauma room, right? Maybe we should invest in a sign that says biohazard instead of wet floor. But to think that, I've seen things get so much worse in recent times. I was in a labor management meeting yesterday, and unfortunately, the management, very, very great to us, meeting with us, listening to our concerns about, hey, we want the, we want a manpower study, we want the cap, the complement cap, we're not getting positions filled, and they say, hey, we understand, we're asking you to do so much, and we, we don't even have the staff to do it. I run programs every day in a basement, and we're supposed to have 15 people in a group room, okay? I could put up to 20-some in there if I have to, just to get people in, in the seats. But eventually, what we're seeing up there, so many people are wearing a couple different hats and doing a couple different jobs, and doing more than what they can possibly get done in a day, running these excellent programs that the DOC has, they're wonderful programs, we can't facilitate them effectively when we don't have the staff. This hiring freeze is not good. If SCI Retreat closes and some of the staff come up to Dallas, I mean, they're coming to an overcrowded prison that is understaffed, and it's a recipe for disaster, I would like you to strongly reconsider this, look at some other options. I think we should leave SCI Retreat open, and I think we should staff the prisons that are in this area, so they're, so we could be staffed at safe, safe levels. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Yeah.
If you would, please introduce yourself.
Well, I ain't Tom Wolfe, because he's not here. Bob Kalabowski, Wilkes-Barre, probably the murder capital of Loser County, and a couple ideas I have about money. Why doesn't the governor, governor put together a committee to go after the almost billion dollars we lost on our radio system? Why don't he go after them? But more importantly, I believe, and I'm not trying to insult you guys, this is what I consider a horse and pony show, because I think the decision's already made, but you think this crowd is big? I want the governor of Pennsylvania to come here and face these people, these corrections officers, their families, and everybody else that's concerned about this. He should be here today. So, what do we have to do to get my governor and their governor here to address this? Because it seems to me this decision is already made. I want the governor to come here. We, you think this crowd is big? We could probably have to rent the arena, if that's what it takes, thousands of people to do it. Now, what do we have to do to get the governor to come here and face these people? That's what I want to know.
He has to be running for office.
Well, he may be running to the FBI to jail. So, I want to know, what do we have to do to get him here, and also, with all this outpouring of support for this prison, is this going to change your minds? Is it? But the bottom line is, I want the governor here, and I think everybody else here does too. Let him drive. Let him drive up in his Jeep.
Thank you, sir. Is there anything else?
Well, no, I, well, I would like you to answer the question. I wanna know, what do we have to do to get my governor and our governor here to talk to us?
Sir, we're here to, to listen to the comments that have been offered up tonight. That's certainly above my, I guess, pay grade in terms of...
All right, well, who do we have to talk to to get the governor to come here? That's what I wanna, I want somebody to give me an answer. You got enough suits here. Somebody tell me, who do we have to talk to to get the governor here?
You're certainly free to contact the governor's office.
I've been trying to get through to PennDOT for two weeks already. You think they're gonna answer my phone at the governor's office? One thing, I'll finish on this. Is your mind made up already?
No, sir, we're taking all this input in. You may not have been here for EDS Pickles' comments. A report will be prepared. It will be presented to the governor for a final decision.
All right, now, the bottom line is, he could make the decision to keep it open, correct?
He's, he's the governor.
Maybe not for long. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Senator?
Good evening, everyone. I'm State Senator Lisa Baker, and I'm here with my colleague Senator John Udichak. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to all of you for coming out and sharing your voices, raising your voices, and sending a clear message. What I need to say to the Department of Corrections is that you have a credibility problem with what occurred. And the people in this room, you look at their shirts, and it says #RetreatDeservesBetter. The people of this community deserve better. Absolutely believe that, and we wanna know that the department isn't just here to do the minimum. We wanna know that you're gonna do the maximum. When you listen to the testimony about the impact to the communities of Shikshini, Cunningham Township, and Salem Township, we could easily bankrupt those little communities and the homeowners there. It's very concerning for me, as the person elected, to represent them, knowing that they are on the hook for a loan that was built for a facility to serve mostly a prison because of DEP regulations. That has been said. As Chair of the Senate Judiciary Committee, I want everyone here to know that we have been looking at corrections reform policy, and probation and parole policy is a decision of the General Assembly. We are looking at it. We've had hearings, we've asked questions. We will be introducing legislation as a result of the parolee murder hearing that we held on October 21st. The idea that there are 1,700 absconders, and I must say that the corrections officers have brought this to our attention, that could fill SCI Retreat and beyond. So we need to prove that if someone absconds, that they are held accountable and finish their sentence if they show up again in prison. Finish the sentence, not be let out early. The other thing that I'd like to communicate with Senator Udichak is a statement that we have already, in essence, shared with Governor Wolf, and I would like to share it with all of you. If I can read my, read my text. On October 10th, Lieutenant Governor John Fetterman brought his self-proclaimed redemption tour to the State Correctional Institution at Dallas in Luzerne County. Lieutenant Governor Fetterman, who serves as the Chairman of the Board of Pardons, spoke to 180 lifers at SCI Dallas and encouraged them to apply for clemency. Lieutenant Governor Fetterman told the inmates that this was their best opportunity to get out of jail in 40 years. Just seven days later, on October 17th, Department of Corrections Secretary John Wetzel was caught on the hot mic saying he was only pretending to listen to the employees, community leaders, residents who were concerned about the impact of closing SCI Retreat would have on public safety, the stability of the correction system, and the economy of Luzerne County. A disturbing pattern is developing here that reveals, and many people have spoken about this tonight, an aggressive push by the Wolf administration to radically change prisoner-release policy in Pennsylvania and make it easier for inmates with life sentences to get out of jail and easier to close more state correctional institutions. Substantial change to the criminal justice system should only evolve through the open and transparent legislative process, not by a unilateral executive action. We do agree with the Wolf administration that there is a clear imperative for Pennsylvania to revise corrections and incarceration policies due to the high financial and societal cost. Many reforms, like Act 122 of Justice Reinvestment, have been enacted with bipartisan support in the General Assembly. Many of our recent reforms, I will point out, have dealt primarily with low-risk inmates. The Wolf administration is making a stark departure from these bipartisan reforms by focusing on those inmates who have committed violent and deadly acts that earn them a life sentence. We argue that Pennsylvania needs to strike a better balance between protecting victim rights and the rights of the accused. And moreover, it is very disconcerting that the administration cares more about the future of prison lifers than the 400 employees at SCI Retreat. So it's hard to reconcile public policies that seek to extend a second chance to convicted murderers while turning a deaf ear to the individuals who risk their life in the name of public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Baker. I'm always proud to be from Luzerne County. I'm very proud tonight, proud of the families of Luzerne County that have gathered here in Nanticoke, proud of the united SCI Retreat family that has gathered here tonight, as brothers and sisters in arms, to talk about what you value, your families value. I'm proud of County Manager Dave Pedri, who laid down some Luzerne County truth on us tonight, laid down some truth. And the truth is, this process, the Act 133 process, passed by the General Assembly, the House and the Senate, senators and representatives empowered by all of you to go to Harrisburg and be your voice, pass the law, put it on the governor's desk, signed by the governor, and is now the law of Pennsylvania. Unfortunately, in the first run at this, we saw the Department of Corrections did not take your voice very seriously, disappointed in how that hearing was handled at Greater Nanticoke Area High School. Governor Wolf, to his credit, hit pause, hit reset, and said, "We're gonna get it right." And I give credit to the Department of Corrections, who were not only here tonight to listen, they met with community leaders from Newport Township, Cunningham, Salem, and Shikshini, and looked them in the eye and heard their personal stories on not only how this decision will impact families, but how it will impact communities. How it will impact communities, that these four or five communities around SCI Retreat will be devastated at the closure of SCI Retreat. And here, here is the truth. The fundamental question that needs to be answered through this process by the Department of Corrections and, more importantly, by the administration, the fundamental question is what and who do you value? Because when we pass a budget in Harrisburg, that's about what and who we value. That's not about dollars and cents. Yes, we wanna invest in our schools. Yes, we wanna invest in economic development. We also wanna invest in public safety. It's the fundamental purpose of government, keeping our families, our neighborhoods, and our communities safe. So what and who do you value? Do you value a partisan ideology that has decided that we should close prisons? That we should do away with the correction system in the United States of America? Is that what you value? Because what Senator Baker just read is an op-ed piece that we'll submit to the media. When you have a lieutenant governor, on October 16th, the day before, 400 families are gonna go fight for their future at Nanticoke High School, the day before, and goes and talks to 180 lifers, folks that have been convicted of the most heinous crimes imaginable, taking another human life? And the lieutenant governor says to them, "Gentlemen, I'm the new Chair of the Board of Pardons. It is your best chance in 40 years to get out of jail. We care about your future. You get a second chance." What and who do you value? I value the 400 families, the communities of Luzerne County. You deserve a second chance. As we get this reset in this discussion through the Act 133 process, I hope the administration hears loud and clear, on the numbers, the budget numbers, we're right. Luzerne County, Dave Pedri can step up, we can help fix that bridge. You have other issues in terms of maintenance at that facility. Luzerne County has always stepped up, and Newport Township has always stepped up to help. So it's not about dollars and cents, it's not about budgets. It's about what and who do you value? Do you value 180 lifers who were tried in a court of law, had their shot at justice, and was convicted? And now they're serving their time. Are they more valuable than the families of SCI Retreat? Not to me. I value the families of SCI Retreat, the families of Luzerne County, and that is the fundamental question the Department of Corrections and the administration has to answer. What and who do you value? I value the families of SCI Retreat. Keep SCI Retreat open.
Thank you. I want to thank all of our attendees here for all of their comments. Our elected officials. I also wanna thank Nanticoke City for hosting this event. This concludes this evening's hearing.